Very good. I'd like to call the order to order the town of McCandless meeting of town council for February twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. If all of you could join us and the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the great public which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, next up, how we conduct ourselves here, uh, we will work together to better our town. We all have an equal voice. Let me disagree, but we will do so with civilian respect because in the end we are all neighbors. A few announcements before we get started, uh, North Allegheny uh is having a stargazer event. It's at McKnight Elementary on March sixth from six thirty to nine thirty more info is on our website and our Facebook page. Uh, we have two roadside cleanups coming up for anybody that would like to volunteer for those April fifteenth and April twenty-second. Again, more information can be found on our website. Uh, the Northern Public Library has their annual garden gala, uh, April twenty-second. Uh, tickets, I assume, are still available, Jasons.
Uh, great. All VIP tickets are sold out, but the regular tickets are available.
Okay, so if you want to, if you want to go hop on it. Um, and then a under announcements to thank you on my social media feed. I saw Representative Endcap. Receive or help get our library seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant to do uh construction. So thank you to him, his team, and whoever else was involved. Uh, in getting that, that really, that really helps, uh, a nice asset we have here. Um, on to the meeting minutes, the February thirteenth meeting minutes are in everyone's packet. Uh, did anybody?
We had one thing that was a public comment on agenda items that was not on.
On this one, okay, I'm sorry, um. Why do I have a different one?
It was your personal, I didn't.
It was updated, so that's the only thing different. Okay, so it is. At this time, if anybody has comments uh on anything on the agenda. Uh, please come forward. You have to sign in when you come upstate your name, address. You have five minutes, and if you're online, what you do in the chat box. Name, address, and what subject you would like to uh uh to speak about now. So is there anyone here gathered that would like to have any comments on any of agenda items? We're going to discuss this evening. Seeing none, is there any uh Sandra in the?
No.
No, okay. Very good. Uh, moving on, meeting minutes. Uh, the February thirteenth meeting minutes are in your packet. Uh, does anyone have any revisions to those? Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion to approve.
I made a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Well, second, okay, uh, everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Minutes are accepted. Uh, next up is the our committee reports admin and finance. Mr. Casey, can you run us through that?
Actually, I'll let Trish run us through.
Please.
Good evening. You have in your packet, which is first, the checklist or the dashboard?
Manning happy presentations.
Oh, then we're gonna cue that up. Hold on one second. I'll let you man. I want to introduce you all to Dave Inman. He is with Manning and the Pier. They have been the pension investment manager for.
Just shy of twenty years.
Just shy of twenty years here at McCandless. Um, we did do a recent RFP for services in two thousand and twenty-two, and they were awarded the contract again for three more years. He comes annually to give us an update on how the pension is doing, and again, he is reporting tonight on the police pension, not the small pension that we talk about. That one is in retirement, so he'll be reporting on the police pension.
Thank you. Uh, thanks for inviting me to come in for an annual update. Um, as Trish said, uh, we, there was a thorough review of our services this past year, and we're very grateful to have the opportunity to continue to serve the town as we've done for just shy of twenty years, and April will be our twentieth anniversary of taking over the uh assets for the pension plan. And, uh, you know, we take this job very seriously. We understand that um our providing the returns that you require to meet your obligations helps give your current uh police officers the the security that they're going to be taken care of. They and their families are going to be taken care of in their retirement. And that the town and and your taxpayers can do so efficiently. So, um, you know, the this is, this is a very difficult business. Um, it's very difficult to predict what's going to happen in the markets, and last year was no exception. Um, it was a difficult year in the market, and it was frustrating for us. We felt like we had uh correctly anticipated that it might be a difficult year for the stock market, and so we held less than our usual um allotment of stocks to help to weather the storm. And that did help a little bit, but it didn't help as much because bonds had a historically awful year. Um, the returns that the US bond market provided last year were the worst in centuries, really. Uh, I don't, I'm not sure that there's actually a recorded history of bond returns that were as bad as last year. Um, uh, so you know, in in underrating equities, uh, it helped a little bit, but it didn't help as much as it usually does because bonds usually are a safe haven in the storm. Um, this past year, that wasn't the case, but the good news is that now that interest rates have risen. The bond portion of your portfolio is yielding more than four percent. And that's a really good basis for future returns. The best and the the best predictor of the next ten years return is the current yield on the ten-year treasury, which right now is about three point nine percent. So, um, your actuarial rate of return is seven percent. If you're getting four percent from your bonds, that means that you don't need your stocks to work as hard or get as big of a return to meet those obligations. So while it's been a somewhat difficult year, um, there is some silver lining to that in that the the returns from the bonds should be fairly steady going forward. So if you turn to page pages three and four and move the most important information up to the front of the report. Um, the the pension at the, this is a our report through the end of January. The assets were nineteen, just under nineteen point four million at the time. They've fallen a little bit because uh February's uh seen some pullback in the market. You'll see from the pie chart that we are now about fifty percent stock and fifty percent bonds and cash. Which is right on top of the conservative pension plan benchmark that you've set, but it's a little bit lower than our typical fifty-five percent um average long-term allocation to stocks. So that's what I've said, we're somewhat underweight to stocks. Um, you'll see on the next page, on page four, our historical returns through January thirty-first. Uh, include, you know, the our since inception return dating back almost twenty years of seven point eight eight percent before fees, seven point three three percent after fees. So we were able to achieve your actuarial rate of return over this, this uh since inception time period, and we beat our benchmarks over that same time period. Um, the shorter term time periods were a little bit shy of the actuarial uh right return assumption, but they're uh ahead of their benchmarks by a decent amount, and then you'll see the one-year return um through January thirty-first with a strong January. Um, our return was minus nine point three three percent. Uh, so it was, like I said, a difficult year, a little bit of a setback, but that's fairly much in line with the benchmarks, maybe a little bit worse than the benchmarks. So going forward, um, we continued, we anticipate that the stock market will continue to see some volatility and that there's a pretty good likelihood we'll test new lows. Um, as I mentioned, we think that the bond market is has started stabilizing. There will be some volatility, but it should be uh it a much more modest going forward. And so we remain underweight equities at about fifty percent stock, um fifty percent bonds. But we're preparing, should the stock market fall further, we're already preparing the kinds of stocks that we want to add to the portfolio to take advantage of those lower prices and 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 build a a strong basis for future strong returns in the portfolio. So before I open up for questions, I did want to announce that we have added to our team in Pittsburgh. And uh through a very thorough search, the best candidate happens also to be a town of McCandless resident. So I, he's here tonight. I thought I'd point him out. Mark Ritchie just joined the firm three weeks ago, so we're building a little empire here in McCandless. What can I, uh, can I, uh? Any questions that I can answer for you?
Um, it's okay. Are you anticipating, like, are you predicting? If you can, I know nobody can predict, but looking at things in terms of a recession. Is that how you're approaching things? Or I actually heard a term the other day immaculate disinflation. I don't know if you've heard that one before, that maybe instead of recession, we're looking at a possible soft landing. I'm not sure what your approach is.
Yeah, um, you know, it's, it's a, there's an increasing data that's pointing towards recession. There are a few charts in the in the report. I won't go through them necessarily, but the yield curve is inverted, meaning that short-term yields are higher than long-term yields. That is, uh, an inverted yield curve is correctly predicted twelve out of the last ten recessions. So there were two times when it predicted it, but a recession didn't happen. Um, the leading economic indicators are have turned quite negative. They've never been this negative before in the last four recessions without a recession following. So and and other anecdotal signs, but so you know, our uh the forecast is cloudy with a pretty good chance of rain. Um, but nobody's forecasts are very good, just like, you know, we have our own meteorologists forecasting the market. And you know, the weathermen very rarely get it exactly right, but we are carrying our umbrella. We're not foreseeing hurricane strength or, you know, really damaging uh uh recession. Um, but we're carrying our umbrella. We're somewhat cautious, but we're getting ready. Should the a recession happen? We we think that that the the stock market prices right now don't really reflect the high probability of recession. So as this year uh uh unfolds, we anticipate earnings will start falling as costs at all companies are going up. And the ability of customers to take increases in the, you know, pass those prices on is getting thinner and thinner. So at some point, the margins at companies is going to start thinning, and then we think at that point, the stock market is probably going to react and drop prices somewhat. So but but we would be looking for that opportunity as as an opportunity to start buying more. Right now, we're still cautious. Does that help?
Thank you. I'm kind of reminded.
Yeah, it's hard to, it's hard to predict.
The chance of meatballs.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I I don't know, David, if you would know it, or Trish, how 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 covered are we on our pension for the police?
I haven't received the actual.
What was it last year?
It was.
The last actuary report was ninety-five percent.
Okay, good.
And that's pretty much where you want to be. You don't want to get too too fully funded.
Yeah.
Necessarily, but you want to be in the nineties. So and I I anecdotally, I'm not sure because it it gets complicated with the the MMOs and the state aid and and state, you know, uh, the way the the government pensions are are run, municipal pensions, but in the private side. Um, despite the fall in the stock market, the the increase in interest rates has led most pension plans to actually increase their live, their 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 funding ratio this year. Um, so the higher interest rates is is a good thing for pensions as long as you don't lose too much money, and it seems like the balance has been struck fairly well recently.
I was gonna ask you that, with the interest rates going up. Okay.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thanks, David.
That's, that's good.
So now on to the check report. Does anyone have any questions on the checklist thing?
If not, and I'd like to make a motion to approve checklist thing number one dated January one two thousand and twenty-three to January thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-three totaling one million, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents as submitted to each member of council and posted on the bulletin board and town website.
Second. Mr. Singer. Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And Karen's?
Thank you. And moving on to the dashboard report, I do have a change to what we received in the packet. Um, the auditors are here this week um for the two thousand and twenty-two fiscal year-end audit. And per discussions with them today, we will be um addressing some of the ARPA money, so we will see a reduction from the report you saw. We'll only be recognizing about six hundred and thirty thousand dollars in ARPA money this year. What that does is that drops the expected net change uh in fund balance to about two million dollars. Which is in line with what we have forecasted to go to capital projects in the five-year plan to help support roads, the culvert replacement, and the windows and HVAC here at town hall. So that brings us in line at a hundred and seven percent for revenues, uh, which compared to two thousand and twenty-one was at a hundred and six percent of budget. Um, very, very close. We are at ninety-three percent of budget for expenditures for twenty-two um and at comparing to ninety percent in twenty-one. So we're a little bit higher in expenditures, but nothing that's of concern. Um. We are trending um according, as I mentioned, in year to year um with the increases in revenues that we've spoken of previously. Um, that were unexpected, and then as well as the delay in different expenditures because of COVID um supplies and their availability, et cetera. So if anyone has any questions on the dashboard, I'm happy to address them now. Um. We will receive the DCD report from the auditors on March thirty-first, which is the deadline. And they are anticipating because of the delay due to some of the pension work that they have to do with mock and hop. Uh, we will receive the final audit report between May thirty-first and six thirty, which is a consistent with prior years.
I just want to take a second to, you know, I I know we're um quote unquote in the black uh coming out of the previous year, but also to note that, you know, that will be used for our CIP um so that we can continue to get projects done within the town. Um, I think something that could be of uh use would be possibly a biannual update on where we stand on the CIP budget.
Yes.
Um, maybe we could do something beginning of the year and something midway through the year would help us prep for budget season as well, uh, just to see where we are with those. Um, you know, they're big projects, so it's something we don't need it monthly. We don't need it, you know.
And we really, yes, we really don't see any significant work because of weather
Correct.
um until about May or June, and so maybe a May-June prior to budget start, and then around September thirtieth prior to budget release.
Please, that would be wonderful.
Great. Happy to do it.
Need to find CIP for those in the audience.
Capital Improvement Program Funds. So we do that on a five-year basis. We plan out five years of projects. And the major revenue source for the town of McCandless is the surplus from the general fund. So the goal is to, in the event of extreme revenues, those go to CIP to help with the road program, stormwater culvert replacement, infrastructure, vehicles, heavy equipment, things of that nature. Any other questions with the dashboard?
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, the communications report, Mr. O'Malley.
Uh, the communications report is in your packet. Do you have any questions? Please let me know.
Great, thank you. Guess now we can turn it over to Dr. Rappo.
The M I B. Uh, we did have a meeting. We had, uh, definitely last week.
Yeah, the McCandless Industrial Development Authority had a meeting last week. Uh, the um one thing that was brought up was the uh request from the Heritage uh and Cultural Center about a sign um that would uh benefits the town out on Inglemar Road. Uh, the only thing the MIDA asked for was uh some updated quotes uh to uh make their decision on funding that project.
Great, thank you. Mr. Tarl, North Hills Council and Government.
No meeting in the month of February. We need quarterly.
Okay, are there any public comments on administration and finance committee items? If not, then I'll turn it over to Mary Ann Eisenwright.
Hi, good evening. Uh, this will be a report of planning and zoning committee, uh, staff report, planning directors report, RJ.
Good evening. Um, so we only have, well, we have two motions actually on the agenda, but only one of them that was coming from the planning commission meeting this month. So, um, I believe we had the public hearing the last time that I was here for the rezoning request that is up for a vote tonight. Um, you know, nothing further on that unless anyone has any questions that have come up in the meantime. Um, the other plan that you all have on your agenda is what we're calling the William Sutnagle subdivision. Um, this is a simple subdivision lot line revision combined application. So basically, there is a very large lot off of Guyton Road. Um, over the years, I think a couple developers have tried to turn the back half of it into some sort of, you know, cul-de-sac with a handful of lots off of it for various reasons that never materialized. Um, so that property has been purchased by a, you know, private single individual, um, or well, a family, um, rather than a developer. And they would like to build their home on the rear of the lot and subdivide it so the front along Guyton. Um, you know, could still be sold as as a buildable lot because there previously was a home on it. Uh, so due to the unusual nature of this property and the history of it, there is a stubbed street that again was eventually going to be turned into a cul-de-sac, but that right of way was so old that it has since been extinguished. It's become a paper street, basically, and the um future homeowner would prefer to have a easement granted basically to Public Works for a hammerhead turnaround. That turnaround has been showed to Public Works, you know, the dimensions of it, they're okay with it. Um, but the town would not take it over as a public road. We would just receive a permanent easement. Uh, which is why this didn't rise to the level of a full land development plan. So a little, a couple, you know, unusual things that we worked out through a couple months over the planning commission. Um, but there were a few conditions that the planning commission recommended be included. If you all were to choose to approve it tonight, those are included in the motion language. Um, so if anyone has any questions about that, said, I know it's a weird one, happy to answer them, but um, otherwise, that's the end for the planning commission agenda. Okay, we're good on that. Um, zoning and Sado modernization. So we had our big open house last, the week before last. Um, February sixteenth. This was also pretty well-attended, um, a little bit different from the first one. The first one was more for public engagement to sort of get feedback to shape what we were going to draft into the code and the map. This one was more of, all right, let's come back and sort of show you our work and where we ended up. Um, so I gave a a presentation at that event that I believe can still be viewed on the town Facebook. If you go into the videos or, you know, live broadcasts and whatnot. Um, there's a replay of that. And again, we we had pretty good turnout. You know, the room was pretty cool. Um, lots of people interested to see what they can or cannot do, you know, with their property, um, after the draft. As it's currently proposed, you know, potentially is adopted by all of you. Um, so that will be coming to the planning commission for recommending vote next week. And we're anticipating that the public hearing at town council is going to be the second meeting of May. There's quite a long period that we have to send it to the county for advisory review. It's a bit longer than our normal ordinance amendments. Um, so just because of the way that's timed, we essentially would need to transmit it to the county immediately following the planning commission meeting to make the second April meeting. So, you know, I'm sure there's going to be a couple typos we want to fix and things like that, just, you know, give it a once-over. So we felt it was best to just bump that to um the second meeting in May to be safe. So that is beginning of our adoption timeline, but you all can certainly see the draft as soon as the planning commission is given a recommending vote. Um, that'll be available to y'all right away in the public. We'll start a public comment period ahead of the public hearing date. Um, so any questions about that process as we move into the final stage?
Uh, just, you know, read a read council would love to see it when it's available.
Yeah, so, yeah, for sure. We're, we're polishing up the copy like that's what I was working on before I walked down into this room. So to be ready to go shortly.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all I have for my report.
Thanks, RJ.
Thank you, RJ.
Uh, next, the liaison reports, planning commission, Mr. Singer.
I think RJ uh handled pretty much everything that was going on there, so I will yield it to uh this clue.
Thank you. The um January zoning hearing board report is in your packet. Um, the February one did resolve the two outstanding um requests that were in there. Um, and I'm going to e- echo what our hearing board board chair, Mr. Quachak, said was, um, we had some very good discussions. There was a lot of community engagement and and the zoning hearing board really appreciates everyone's continued engagement and um how how, at a lack of better words, well-behaved everybody was. So we appreciate them. There's any other questions?
There'll be in March.
And that, that's right, and there will be no zoning hearing board in March.
Thank you, Trish. I'll turn it over to Councilwoman Schwager for the Recreation Committee Report.
Thank you. Um, first up, the liaison reports, uh, we did activities advisory committee. Um, were you guys able to review the project form?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so do I need to have approval for this or? How do we want to do this?
We usually do the head nod on the project.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Later.
Pardon?
Yeah, we have it under. Yeah.
Okay, so we can do, okay, because several things I like, um, Trish had said in a few emails back. She mentioned about having possibly like a coffee truck and stuff. Is that something we can add to this project report?
We um, sorry, and we had anticipated potentially the town just purchasing coffee either from Starbucks or having it donated through Dunkin'. Um, we can try and get a a coffee truck and then have that as our default.
Um, I mean, it sounds like you've got it covered. That's my, I, the other thing is, I didn't know if the Heritage Center, if they wanted to do something where, you know, they, I don't know, supply things and would gather donations or something.
Joe is shaking his head yes.
Okay, okay, so either way, we can just include that in with things. Uh, we'll figure out the details in the backside.
Okay, great.
Okay, um, so any questions, comments about that? None. Um, okay, so we'll move on to the finance, um, development, uh promotional committee for the Heritage Center. That's Mary Ann.
Uh, we had a meeting this uh this month, and the minutes are in your packet. I would just call your attention to the activities calendar that is attached to that. There's quite a few things going on that are planned and scheduled and some things you may need tickets for, so I would just encourage everyone to take a look at that. That's all.
Great, thank you. Okay, so are there any uh public comments? For the recreation committee items? Uh, Carolyn, this is Trish. I would just, I hope with the upcoming events in March, um, to make sure we continue talking with John and our communications to make sure that word gets out online and so forth and uh really push that because it it's exciting, the things that are happening in our town hall, like to see as many people as we can there. Do they have this? Have they posted any of these activities, all these different dates on the calendars or Facebook or anything? Not that I've seen. Um, because I haven't seen either. Yeah, so I don't know if um if are the activities, if they've created any sort of um like advertising media to that John could use to get out there. But um I can check in with them and help if I need to.
McMail has some of.
Yeah, so some of the information has gone out. Some of it is based on um activity requests that are on the agenda for passage tonight. So after that, they'll be put in place.
And will they post the whole listing of all those calendar dates that we have for the event, like for the rest of the year, put them all out there? So, you know, they're kind of like already circulating?
I I'm gonna let Trish answer that a little bit better since she handles the activities committee.
So tonight's on the agenda, the activities committee for the March twenty-fifth ribbon cutting for Devlin Court as well as the Grubbs Road Sidewalk. Um, so those will be on March twenty-fifth with a rain date of April first. Once we get that approved tonight, we will put those dates out. McMail had the stargazer event, um, that is on March sixth. And that is with the NA Foundation. And then we will begin um advertising treasures in the trunk. Uh, shortly, I know they just created that flyer, and they will start reserving spots for that event as well. Did I miss one?
I was looking at the event with.
The Earth Day event with EAC. The roadside pickup will be the fifteenth and the twenty-second, the April twenty-second event is Earth Day. And so the anticipation is to bolster that twenty-second event to include either a food truck, breakfast, um. either a food truck, breakfast, um, in the past. Um, some opportunities have arisen with waste management, with Starbucks, with sometimes with Walmart, et cetera. If we can get people to do giveaways and demonstrations at the event, we will anticipate that. I know AAC is trying to work in conjunction with EAC.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Wrapped up there, Carolyn. You want me to take it from here?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry to ask for public comments earlier, but we could do that right now.
Yeah, public comments on recreation. Name and address.
Um, my name's Joe Wall. I'm with the F D P C. I live at two seventy-five Arcadia Drive. We wanted to announce the winners of our awards that we're giving out at our gala this year, the Shining Star Awards. I'm very pleased to announce that our gala is not only going to be a dinner dance, but it's going to recognize people in the town for their volunteerism over a long period of time. Tonight, I'm very pleased to announce that Greg Quachak, a long time, member of the fire department and a member of, of several council senior will be one of our awardees. Irene Caliendo, with her work with the library, is one of our awardees. Jerry Hoffman is one of our awardees. Richard's, uh, Richard Schnuck, I can't read my own writing. I apologize. Mrs. Marcia Caliendo, who's here tonight with her work with the ambulance authority. Beverly Hoffman, with her work with various, um, philanthropic organizations here locally. We're honoring one person posthumously, and that would be Jack Kelly, who started actually incorporated in the Mar Athletic Association. That was the first president to sponsor girl softball. And then we have a Rising Star Award that we're giving to high school senior, and that would be Andrew McLaughlin for his work with the Heritage Center. We're having this on, uh, this gala at the Chadwick on November twenty-fifth. We hope to see everybody and their relatives and their brothers and sisters. Everybody, we'd like to see everybody there at the, at the, at, uh, at the Chadwick. Uh, it starts at six o'clock. And as I said, it's a dinner dance, so we'll go until about eleven. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wall.
Thank you.
Is there, I know we gotta go back. So let's, is there any other further comments on the Recreation Committee, any items, anyone here or anyone in the chatroom?
No.
None. And for housekeeping, we did not call for public comments on planning and zoning. So if there's anybody here that has that, any comments on that? Please approach the microphone, anyone online. Okay. Very good. So next up here, Town Manager's Report.
A copy of the Town, Town Manager's Report was in your packet. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Any questions for Brian? Town Attorney's Report.
Um, my report was also part of the packet and, uh, if we have any questions, we can talk about it in the executive session at Congress. Thank you.
Engineers Report.
Um, also, uh, engineers reports, uh, we do get a monthly engineers report. Wanted to add it to our agendas as something that council can see every month. Uh, Kelly from Gateway is here. If you have any questions or if you have any from me, we can both try taxing that.
Same now.
Did we, did we get, did we get a final, um, listing of all the, uh, ponds?
Uh, we talked about that in the last stormwater one. I think it was last meeting or the one before. They were still finishing, finishing up a few. Um, and it said in the engineers report, they're still finalizing a couple of them. We expect it shortly.
And then we'll get the Friday requisition.
Correct.
And, uh, does that include the, what's happened, the La Roche dams? I noted that. Was there a question on what's happening with those?
Those are, um, requirements of the town to file certain paperwork with the state. Uh, it's mostly operations, maintenance, uh, emergency, uh, management, uh, contacts, those type of things. So, um, Gateway's been helping me get through some of that documentation. We have to do things like every three to five years to certain inspections and process you have to do.
But they are still, are they under La Roche ownership or are they?
They are. So that came up in that stormwater management report last month. Um, there are four dams within the town. Uh, they currently are all owned by the town and often it's owned and operated is how it's described. So the town is owner and operator of those. Um, the one specifically in La Roche are roadways is what is considered the dam. And like our town manager was saying, it's, it's contact information and paperwork and, and repelling of informational needs. So that's where we are right now with those.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the engineer?
Nope. Okay. Thank you, Keller. Uh, okay. We have no old business, new business. Uh, so our personnel code did not allow someone that was a town employee to serve in political office. We looked at it. We had it rewritten, uh, cause some members of council felt that that, that was important. So we have, uh, the ordinance that was included in our packets. So is there any questions, comments, anybody has before we?
Yes, I, I'd like to make a comment. Um, you know, I applaud the council for taking time to look at this. It was something unique to McCandless, um, you know, our solicitor even identified that, you know, this hadn't been something common practice. So the ability to take a look at something that needed change likely to, to work through it in a committee and get it done. I'm happy with the results. Personally, I am. Yes, thank you.
Anybody else? I had one question. Does anybody see if they're allowed to, if, if one of our employees is allowed to hold office at the state or county, state or federal level? There, they could have a vote on what could flow to the town. Or is that against, would they have to recuse themselves?
It's your turn. So the way it is written is that, um, as an employee of the town, you cannot be an elected official for any office that the town can vote on. So that would be county, federal, state, um, local as well. So school board, state rep, county council, county executive.
Okay. Yep, clear to me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, okay, Mike? I'd like to make a motion to tentatively ident- said, to adopt. Tentatively adopt ordinance number fifteen thirty-three, amending article one thirty-nine Personnel Code to revise regulations regarding the political activity of town employees.
Second. Second.
Second, Mr. Singh, looks like you got it there. I have run in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Uh, who wants to tee up this next one for us?
Regional Asset District? Sorry, I'm jumping ahead of our.
Can you give us a refresher of the exact property this is referring to?
Yeah.
This can, I think it would benefit council to remember.
Okay, I hope I get this one right. At least Chuma funeral or, or, you know, there are a couple properties included, uh, directly on Perry Highway. As part of the request, there are also a couple properties off of Einhaus Drive, which is that private drive, sort of immediately south um, of the property in question. And the stated purpose of this request, which is not binding, but, you know, the developers provide as a concept, is that they would like to build, um, I think it's an electric vehicle or we're the tour, we're the collective, we're the director of the service building as well as storage lot on the properties acquired. Um, most are not all the properties in question are already split zone, commercial and residential, which is leaving them in the commission. They're asking for them all the way to see pretty commercial.
And just to reference for that, RJ, this is also, if we weren't passing this tonight, this would have been addressed in the zoning update, correct?
It, it is identified.
Thank you. Uh, pending that, I'll, I'll make a motion to adopt the tentatively identified ordinance number one five three four, amending part thirteen Planning and Zone Code of Codified Ordinances and Zoning, District map of Town McCandless. Rezone property located at one zero four one zero to one zero four one eight Perry Highway, identified as Allegheny County block and lot numbers one two zero five dash H dash seven six and one two zero five dash eight dash ninety-eight and ninety-two to ninety-four Einhaus Drive, identified as Allegheny County block and lot numbers twelve zero five dash H dash forty-four, twelve zero five dash H dash forty-eight and twelve zero five dash H dash forty-nine from R two, single family and two-family dwelling districts to C three highway commercial districts.
Thank you for taking on the task, Mr. Singh. Do we have a second? Any seconds? Okay.
There's no second motion.
Motion.
Fails.
Okay, I've never had that before. Okay.
We have to talk about what I do with this recently.
Hey, very good. Moving on. Next up, we get a slice of rad funding. And it's in the packet. What we get sixteen, we get about sixteen thousand dollars.
Two's revenue, one's, we received about sixty-five, almost sixty-six thousand dollars more in regional asset district or sales tax that one time that they pay in Algeany County. Of that sixty-five percent, we appropriate twenty-five percent of that to an authority for the council's elements in our region. So tonight we need to ask council how they would like to direct the spending of sixteen thousand, four hundred ninety-six dollars and seventy-four spent. In the past, uh, in twenty twenty-one, we split it equally between the library and the ambulance authority. Um, and the year before that, I think we did a hundred percent of the ambulance authority. And then previous to that, it was mostly directed to the library. So, um, we have had an increase year over year. We have a little bit more than twice what we had last year. Um, so it was a healthy revenue source this year. Anyone has any questions, I'm happy to address them. Otherwise, we're looking for an allocation.
So we have three options, cog, library or ambulance. Okay. That I put on the, the table, I think cog is well funded and it's a group of people. So it really comes down to the ambulance or the library. And I know they're both great assets that we have. Uh, the ambulance authority, as everyone on the board has read, has seen, you know, some red numbers the past two years. And like most ambulance authorities is looking for money. Our library is a great asset. Um, they just got a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar grant. They have a nine hundred thousand dollar PPP loan that they didn't, they didn't use last year and they have a two million dollar foundation. So I'm maybe throwing out there the idea that we can give it all to the ambulance authority. And I know our liaison might say something different, but.
I would support that as well. Um, yes, the ambulance authority has been, um, working with their financial uh, stability. And I think as a council, we can acknowledge the great improvements that have been made. And I think this is, would be a really good way for us as a town to say, yes, you're doing the, the job that needs to be done. Let's keep the good work coming.
I agree.
I fully support it. Me too. For sure.
Yeah, no offense.
If, if you want me to say, you know, I'm gonna sit up here, I, I obviously.
They do great work.
Listen, under, understand, I'm just gonna explain, you know, the library, I'm a representative of their board, their liaison, and they would request obviously for it to be split. Um, I think they also would understand that the ambulance authority would benefit from this as well. So I would also say that the ambulance authority.
Thank you. We have a motion.
I'd like to make a question.
I second.
Go ahead.
Okay, motion to adopt tentatively identified resolution number two, two thousand twenty-three, awarding excess regional astr- asset district funds to the McCandless Franklin Park Ambulance Authority.
Second. I brought, uh, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is a subdivision, uh, lot liner vision, RJ. Give us the briefing on it.
Yes, so this is the one that I started earlier in my, uh, in my report. So just very hard to explain to them again. But I'm happy to give the guy a review, but, um, does anyone have a question?
I do not.
I will make a motion to approve the William South Nagel Simple Subdivision Lot Line Revision Plan submitted by Melanie Williams located at seventeen twenty-four and seventeen fifty-five Guyton Road. If approved, the following conditions apply. All remaining comments of the Town Engineers Review Letter dated February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three must be satisfied. And the proposed hammerhead maintenance turnaround and stormwater design must be reviewed and approved by the town engineer prior to construction.
You're an MVP tonight, Mr. Singh.
I am.
Stack active, Mr. Casey. Everyone in favor of them, of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion periods. Next up, the Activities Committee has a project form in for two ribbon cutting events for the Grubbs Sidewalk and the Devlin Park Port Project. I think it's both the same day, right, Brian?
Yeah.
And then a tournament afterwards. Would anybody have any questions of our Activities Liaison? Does this need to be a motion or just a?
I can read the motion.
Just put it on the agenda.
Either works.
Either. Why don't we do head nod? Just, yeah.
Yep.
Um, everyone, everyone good with that? Yep, here, Carolyn. Okay.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So that's approved. Um, same with this form, it could be a head on, a head nod.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, we're moving, we're moving along here. Then, um, this can be as well. Okay. Any questions or comments on this? And then is everyone in real, of support of it?
Yes.
Yes, yes, okay. All head nods. Okay. Last up, uh, we have two appointments to the ambulance authority. I think we have a memo on the, suggested who they are. If anyone's gonna go against that, let us know, because I think there's a different process here. If, if we have, if we need to, if I don't hear that, I guess we'll leave it up to Trish.
Thank you. Um, first, I just want to state that, uh, once again, we had four incredibly well qualified candidates for two positions. But, uh, after quite a lot of discussions, probably more discussion than I've experienced in appointments. We, we've, we've came to a conclusion on two individuals that would serve best the McCandless Franklin Park Ambulance Authority right now. Um, so the first motion I'd like to make is a motion to appoint Bill Youngblood as a member of the McCandless Franklin Park Ambulance Authority for a full term to expire December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Second, Mr. Casey. I guess the question I had is, he, there's no conflict with this appointment because he's the executive, what's the head of executive director of our sanitary authority. Okay, no conflict, we're good. Okay, uh, motion on the table, point, appoint Mr. Youngblood. Everyone in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Think he'll bring great insight to management skills. Next.
Okay. And secondly, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Keith Hall as a member of the McCandless Franklin Park Ambulance Authority for a full term to expire December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Second, Mr. Casey. Uh, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. Very good. Welcome to the team, gentlemen. Uh, okay, wrapping up, uh, we'll have public, uh, non-agenda comments. If you're here, come on up, name and address. If you're online, type in your address and your name and subject, and it will give you those on microphone. Don't see anybody here. Do we have anybody online that was? Oh, and please.
Hi there. My name is Jean Pettridge. I live at two thirty-five Sunset Road. And I just wanted to bring a couple of things to your attention. First of all, the whitetail suburban culling has done nothing. Um, I have a herd of deer in my. Um, I have a herd of deer in my backyard. The archer said he got one deer. Um, I've lived here for thirty-eight years and I have an award-winning garden. And the last two years, they beat everything. I have chicken wire around every single shrub. I have now resorted to ordering some solar ultrasonic to see if they work. Because my choice is either electric fence around an acre or move. Because I was heartbroken when they ate, um, well, they were probably twenty-five-year-old dwarf evergreens. And, um, so that's that. The other thing, um, we still have speeding down Sunset Road. I, and my neighbor did a petition with the former town manager and, um, got nowhere. Since the pandemic has finished, the speeding going up Sunset, which is quite a hill, and coming down is the same. They're at least going fifty miles an hour. And I'm not saying anything about the police, but I never see a police cruise car on my street. And I'm usually out there all day because I'm the big gardener. And I asked for a speed bump to be put in, um, sort of just, I live just below the curve there. And, um, my cat was killed, a deer was killed. I called the township to come and collect the deer. Um, they said it was my responsibility. Bring it up to the road. Well, I couldn't bring it up to the road. Um, I had two cars crash through the front of my property. And the police said, well, if you see a truck driving around without a red front bumper, you know, let us know. And um, so now I have split rail fence right there at the corner. And you're not allowed to put them in cement. Mine are now in cement because it's happened twice. And the first time it was young kids on a snow day or whatever. Um, that was five or six years ago. And the father came and said he and his sons would take care of it. They did not take care of it. And it was a little late for me to be filing, um, a police report or whatever. But finally I did, and I did get, um, some compensation from them. So those are my two compend. I would love to see, oh, speed bump. They have them all over the country. They even have them in Tanzania where they call them sleepy policemen. They save lives. My neighbor and I have almost been run over at least three times. Recently, she walks her dog and I walk with her. So, um, waving them down, doing anything, nothing works. They're on their cell phones and they don't care. Okay, that's it.
Jean, thank you for your comments. Is there, are there any other public comments for non-agenda items for those here in the room with us? Or those online?
Online, we have Susan Graham, uh, one, oh, one, nine, three, Woodbury Drive.
Does she have the mic?
I will send her a mute. I've asked her to start both video and audio.
Ms. Graham, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I think it just came.
You got five minutes.
Five, yeah, I'm Susan Graham. I live at one, oh, one, nine, three, Woodbury Drive. I'm right across from that new V R B O that's popped up in our neighborhood in the fall. And I just had kind of a quick question about if it's going to be on anybody's agenda. I know I've heard some words that, you know, the council is working on it. I don't know if the town manager is aware of it. I know that RJ is aware of it, but you know, it just keeps getting worse and worse.
Thank you. Yeah, we, we are aware of it. I know it's in our zoning uh, rewrite. Some.
Good, good.
Yeah.
I can't hear, I can't hear RJ.
This particular situation is under investigation.
Okay, because I know, I mean, I know there's other ones that are on agendas. It, it, this isn't on any agenda then yet. Is that correct?
Um, I, I think, can you hear me okay? So.
A little bit, yes.
Uh, yeah, so I, I think what you're referring to for on the agenda is we have a, an actual application for what's called a special inspection use um, for a different short-term rental that was heard by the zoning hearing board. Um, that was an application that was actually paid by that entity.
The one from last week?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, so that's a bit of a different nature. Um, but I think that's probably all I can stress at the public meeting at this point.
Okay, will we be notified when something's coming up? Because we've all sent, many of us have sent letters.
Um, so if, yeah, something like this were to come to the zoning hearing board through one form or another, um, there would be a posting on the property and it would be put in the newspaper. All zoning hearing board cases are advertised that way. I don't believe that you sent out letters to anyone for the last one that's ours to be practiced.
Would it be appropriate to explain the process? I might lean on our solicitor for that response. Um, we're an ongoing investigation related to zoning usage rules, what we can and can't share at this point.
Just what the process is.
Well, I, I think what, uh, Councilmember Casey's referring to is the fact that once the investigation is completed, um, the town will decide whether or not to pursue, um, what's called a notice of violation. I think that's where we're, we may be headed. And, um, then at that point, uh, once the owner receives that notice of violation, they have an opportunity to appeal that citizen's hearing board. Um, if, if they do not appeal it, then it becomes unassailable and we can, uh, seek fines and or go to common police court and get a court order to stop the use. Um, that's the, the short term. If it goes to the zoning hearing board, that's what RJ was referring to. Then we will advertise the hearing, uh, in the newspaper. The property will be posted, et cetera. But that's probably, you know, I, I wouldn't think that there would be any kind of hearing until April at the absolute earliest, that may be beyond that.
Right. Okay, so my, my question is, the other one that the hearing was for last week was basically around the same timeframe as whenever this V R B O started, and they've already lost their appeal.
So again, that was a, that's a different type of process called a special inspection. That's something that the property owner applies for themselves.
Oh, okay, I see. All right. Okay. Thank you.
Any further comments, Ms. Graham?
Um, I'm just hoping we can work through this quickly because it's really is a nuisance. And I understand there's it's time sensitive. I mean, you, obviously you understand it's time sensitive, and I know there is a procedure that has to be followed, but I hope it'll be quick.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Ms. Graham.
Thank you.
Anyone else online?
No.
Nope. Anyone else here? Nope. Very good. Uh, we are going to adjourn to executive session to discuss personnel matters. This is adjourned.